The regular Rev. City Council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM, June 2nd will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Lillis?
Here.
Councilor Rousey?
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen?
Here.
Mayor by Solovich?
Here. Approval of minutes, City Council Workshop, May 19th, and approval of minutes, City Council Meeting, May 19th. No one has any questions or changes? And ask for a motion, have we approved these minutes? Motion made by Rousey, you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda? Uh-oh. No picture. I'm getting all these frickin' texts from residents. Oh, it just, it came on now. I just kept TV timeout.
There you are.
Approval of the-
You do have football games, don't you?
Oof, after I put the phone out there, I knew the heat calls would be coming. Tonight's agenda, we have, I think, one item to add, letter from the Fourth of July Committee, and I think we'll put that as number seven under New Business. Anybody else have anything to add to the agenda or delete? If not, call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with that change. So, motion made by Koyvenen, you have a support? Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. No appointments or presentations? And we allow anybody in the audience, five minutes to address the council at this part of the meeting, but we do allow time after the meeting. There's no one to address the council? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of payroll, May 1st through the 15th. Approval of claims, May 2020, and lease between State of Minnesota, DNR, and the City of Evlith for brush disposal and Boulder storage. And lease between the State of Minnesota and the City of Evlith for water storage area and sewage lift station. These are just leases we've had, aren't they?
Correct.
Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings? No unfinished business? J. Wan, New Business, consider bids for 2020 Garfield Street and Utility Improvement Projects. You know, I was, see, the bids came in a little, little bit higher than we expected, and I was just wondering, with all the other things we have going on, if we should just reject the bids and rebid in the fall?
I guess I can see the wisdom, you know, we've got a lot of unknowns that are in our future.
Yeah, we actually don't know what's gonna happen from week to week, so maybe, we're dealing with the wastewater plant permit too, you know? That one, we're still working on how that ends up.
I was kinda hoping that it would come in a little bit lower, but $1.5 million for that project loan, that's a pretty big bite.
And that's what we were thinking for all of the project, and I don't have a problem with waiting until fi- or until the fall.
That's what I was thinking, we'll just reject the bids and rebid again in the fall. Anybody else have any discussion on that? If not, call for a motion that we reject the bids at this time and rebid again in the fall.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen?
I'll support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number two, consider quotes for West Evlith ditch improvements. See, we have Jola and Sop have the low bid for $19,380. I know that ditch has been a problem for a lot of years, and I think it's, if we start tackling it now, it's gonna help us along the way, because Ellen was out there looking at it, one of the residents, and we kinda asked him to look ahead for future problems, and I think we should do something with that, a ditch.
Yeah, I agree, we have, we have some drainage issues out there in general, that probably be a good idea to get started on trying to handle.
Yeah, if you get more activity out there, building, you know, it's only gonna complicate things. Anybody else have any discussion on that subject?
I have a motion.
All right, John, you're making the motion toward Jola and Sop's contract, you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item three, liquor licenses for Robert J. Wood are in business as Johnny D's at 301 Grant Avenue, which is Hoagie's former tavern. Anybody have any questions or discussion? If not, to call for a motion that we approve these liquor licenses?
So moved.
You're making, so you're making a motion?
Yeah.
John, you supporting? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Number four, termination of temporary easement between the City of Evlith and St. Louis and Lake County's Regional Railroad Authority. What exactly does this easement entail? Is that for the trails?
Yeah, so if you look at Exhibit 1 map, you folks gave them an easement last year, and this is technically with the rail authority, Masabi Trail, they're using Elsor Snowbills, and a large part of the trail is on the property, you're selling to the school district.
Okay.
So I talked to Bob Manzeline, and he understands that we're gonna do this termination, and they're working really closely with the school district to relocate that portion of the trail off of our water line loop, where it was, over to the east. And then also, City Attorney Brunfeld will be drafting up a license agreement for the remainder of the trail that's on city property for future use.
Yeah, no one anticipated that school going there when we made the lease. Anybody else have any questions? Not call for a motion that we go ahead with the termination of the temporary easement?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Number five, COVID-19 business loan and grant guidelines. Jack, do you wanna elaborate a little bit on that one?
Well, in a nutshell, basically, this is an expansion of, we're submitting for the council's consideration, an expansion of the bridge loan that you approved a couple meetings ago, or that we approved, I should say. This, there are two different types of assistance that we hope to provide to the affected businesses. One would be under a business assistance loan, and the second would be under a business assistance grant. Either the loan or the grant would be in addition to existing loan opportunities under the bridge loan, as well as under the-
Storefront loan.
Yep. And I think what we're hoping the council might consider is, in addition to accepting the loan guidelines and the grant guidelines, to also approve the prior allocation of a hundred, of that $170,000 that we had put toward the bridge loan, to encompass all of the different loans that we're hoping to offer. Keep in mind, this still has to be reviewed and passed by our Economic Development Authority if the council chooses to go forward with this. The last thing that we're hoping the council will accept is the fact that EDA Board Member John Rousey and myself would review the applications and approve applications that come in for all of the loans or the grant program. Now, the businesses that would be eligible for the loan or grant would have to be within the city proper. The expansion that's made with the proposed grant and loan, or the different grant and loan programs, is that these funds could be used for business expenses that have been incurred since March 17th of 2020, or for building improvements made in preparation for reopening. This, I guess, opens the ability, or the solicitation for applications quite a bit wider than the original bridge loan program did. And I think we heard the council loud and clear at our workshop that we wanna try to make things a little bit simpler for our business folks to make application for assistance because of the governor's shutdown of their business due to the COVID-19. So I guess with that, I would entertain any questions the council had.
I would just like to say thanks for putting all the time in it that you guys have been doing with it to make it easier for the business owners, and now I just hope that the business owners come and apply for it, you know, especially if they need it.
So after the EDA approves it, then I'll do my email blast with the merchants and that type of thing, and have them available on the website, and you can contact us too.
I'll tell you, I have to compliment everybody who worked on this, because, like you say, the businesses are important, it takes a lot of time and research to put programs like this together, not real simple, because there's a lot of regulation and different guidelines for the funds, and I think you've covered basically everything. I said, excellent job, excellent job, yep.
Definitely have to give kudos to Jackie, as well as our financial consultant, Dave Saleen.
Yes, it's, it's not an easy thing, just you're gonna borrow somebody some money, there are rules on the different sources of funds.
And then especially the way that they've been kinda closed their businesses and everything, and, you know, it's tough for everybody all the way around, so you guys did a good job, everybody involved.
Yep, and I hope, I hope this program does help some of these businesses, because it's just heartbreaking to see what's going on with some of this stuff. And I think it's an excellent, excellent addition and changer, because I'm all for looking for a motion to approve these guidelines.
Well, I'll make the motions.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
All support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number six, purchase agreement and resolution authorizing conveyance of real estate to Carwin J. Marks and Cara K. Marks. I know we were working on this for quite some time, and they had their plans finalized, and it looks like there's gonna be a new structure there shortly on that property. Anybody have any questions on that one? If not, call for a motion that we approve the purchase agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. We have item number seven, the letter from the Fourth of July Committee, and it's, you know, it's kind of, I don't know, it's kinda depressing, you know what I mean, to find out your obstacle is your insurance carrier? And I guess I don't quite understand, well, obviously, they're looking for any reason not to pay something, which is how they make a profit, but I think it's something we'll have to maybe discuss going forward from there, because I have no idea what the tendence would be and things like that, but from what I'm looking at this, if you went to an event and got the disease liable, I, I don't understand what they're even talking about. How can you prove you got the disease somewhere? Unless you got tested before you came in, then if you had it, you'd be kicked out anyway. I mean, I just, I just don't get it, I think a letter of clarification from the underwriter would be nice, if that's possible. Mitch?
Well, yeah, I mean, are you asking the Fourth of July Committee to reach out to their carrier, or, I mean, you could direct, you could make that request as a council that the Fourth of July Committee can reach out to their liability carrier on that?
Yeah, 'cause my concern is, is this what's gonna happen if anything that goes on? You know, are you opening the door to some other type of thing? We're not gonna cover some natural disaster, you know, things like that.
Yeah, I think they're making reference to the Phase 3 and Phase 4 guidelines of the Minnesota Department of Health Guidelines with regard to crowds.
Well, I guess the only exception is that if you're throwing Molotov cocktails and bricks, then you, then you get by. With that, I don't see anybody condemning that or denying any claims. With that, with that debacle I went on down the metro, but I don't know, it's up to the business owners, is they want something, they want us to try to do or accommodate, maybe with the fireworks, block the street off, or?
You know, I was thinking of that today too, and I haven't talked to the chief, but, you know, they're gonna have the fireworks, so maybe we should block the street off, and...
I talked to the chief about that already, and I recommend against it. You can't do anything that, you can't do anything as a city that would sponsor any sort of a group gathering or anything like that in the city on the Fourth of July, because if it's in violation of the executive order or the guidelines, the same thing that they said here in their paragraph, that if the Fourth of July Committee sponsors these events that has people gathering on the Fourth of July, and that's not in compliance with the guidelines or the governor's executive order, their liability insurance carrier will not provide insurance coverage, they will, that will be an exclusion coverage. So if Fourth of July Committee isn't doing it for that reason, but you went ahead and did it, well, you really can't, because the same situation would apply to you. If you went ahead and sponsored some sort of an event on the Fourth of July that had people potentially gathering in large groups in violation of an executive order or the guidelines, and if there was, if there was a spread of the virus that happened as a result of that, and the city got sued, you wouldn't have insurance protection for it. And, and at that point, the city's general fund and your reserves would be exposed to a potentially large liability, and you just couldn't do that. So it'd be very, very risky for this city government to sponsor any sort of a group activity that might happen on the Fourth of July, or that would in any way encourage people to congregate on the street.
Well, then I've got-
Because if you do, and, and that causes some sort of a spread of the pandemic or the virus, you will have an enormous liability on your hands for which you will not have insurance coverage.
Let's say you got the fireworks there, and there's car, people are gonna naturally gather there, and some kid gets hit by a car.
Well, so what, what I talked to-
Are we looking for a public safety standpoint?
Yeah, what, what needs to happen on the Fourth of July is, clearly, people have the right to make an individual choice on the Fourth of July to go to a local bar. So if there's a local bar that has, that is operating in compliance with whatever the parameters are at that time, and individual citizens choose to go, and let's say they have, let's say that bar has a large outdoor patio area, so on the Fourth of July, citizens make the individual choice to go and congregate there to celebrate the Fourth, and then on the night of the Fourth, the fireworks are about to start at, let's say, 10 o'clock. What I talked to the chief about, what needs to happen is, we need to have, to make sure that there's enforcement happening, that we would enforce the liquor laws no different than we would any other night of the week, and that is, people can't have drinks on the street, and they can't be out in the middle of the street. If people wanna come outside on a sidewalk without a drink in their hand and watch the fireworks, they're free to do that, but, you know, we would need to make sure that we have a proper law enforcement mechanism going on to make sure that, you know, people aren't gonna spill out onto the street, and to make sure that people aren't carrying drinks out on the street. So, because if we don't do that, we're implicitly allowing for essentially a street gathering to take place.
Now, this isn't gonna happen enough, but this is just a question, what happens if they, if some, they postponed everything until October? Could it run like the Fourth of July again, or are we still gonna be in the same?
Well, I mean, I think if you, if you postpone the event to a later date, I think you could legitimately do that. You know, later, if, if at a later date, the guidelines have relaxed, and the laws for a street dance or a street festival to take place of some sort, then clearly, you would have the authority as a city council to defer the event to that time.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there just because, here's my thought, okay, they have the street, or not the street dance, the, they canceled the street dance and canceled the parade and everything. Okay, now we're gonna have the fireworks. Well, I know, just like everybody in this room knows what it's gonna be like downtown Evlith for the fireworks. No, we're not blocking the streets off. Everybody's in big trouble, because they're gonna be all over. I don't think the chief has enough guys, if we get cadets, we get everything to keep them into the establishments.
Yeah, but the problem is, if you block the streets off, then you're basically, you're basically promoting a street gathering at that point.
Okay, so you don't block the street, and somebody gets hit, then who is liable? The State of Minnesota for issuing these guidelines under executive order? Do they, are they bearing liability for that?
Well, I don't, I don't think, if, if the city has, if the city is, you know, if the city has taken, if, if people, if people float out in the street, the city is, has less liability risk by not barricading the streets than if you barricade the streets. Because if you barricade the streets, and that basically turns into an implicit street festival, because the, the streets are barricaded, and now everybody's spilled out on the street, and they're having a good old time, and gathering groups, and drinking, and, and, you know, that's a situation that if the pandemic spread because of that, you have increased liability risk, because if there's a claim arising from that, you're not gonna have insurance coverage. But if you don't barricade the streets, and it's basically, business downtown is being conducted no different than business downtown is being conducted tonight.
Okay.
And that is, but, but we're gonna make sure that, you know, people aren't carrying drinks out into the street, and, and we're, you know, we're having, you know, some sort of a presence down there to make sure that people aren't hindering traffic or blocking traffic on the street, or are floating out on the street.
I just, I just-
The city, the city's not gonna have liability risk in that concern.
I'm just looking at, okay, we're not blocking anything off, so it's a night as normal, and now we've got both sides of the streets filled up with cars, and all of a sudden the fireworks go off, and now there's 3,000 people on the main street walking all over these cars. Whose fault is that?
It's their own fault, it's the city's fault.
I mean, we couldn't put nothing up to say no parking? Or is that because they're anticipating it's on?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, if, if people do that on their own, that's, you know, we're not responsible, but if we set something up where we basically encourage people to congregate in a certain place, and then, you know, and then I think the risk on that is, it would essentially turn into almost like a street dance.
Well, that's, see, I'm, I'm just asking these questions, I owned a bar for 30 years, and I haven't talked to any of the bar owners about this, or even haven't talked to the chief about this, it's just my mind going out, because I know what's gonna happen that night. You know, I know how people it can get, you know, I just wanna know who's gonna get in trouble over this.
Well, the people themselves, if they, again, you know, it comes down to a matter of individual choice, if they, if they're the ones who are wandering out of the streets aimlessly and are not paying attention to what's going on around them, that's a risk that they assume, and they're responsible for that, but the city is not liable for that.
And I don't want our law enforcement to be overwhelmed with all these people, and what do they do?
Well, their job is not to direct traffic, they respond to emergencies with the ambulance and other things.
Yeah, I think, yeah, a reasonable enforcement effort would be kinda the key phrase, or reasonable enforcement effort, it's not, it doesn't mean that, you know, we have to be out there in riot gear with batons and pepper-
And then I guess here's the next question, is chief, what do you think?
Yeah.
Mayor Councilor, we've had a couple different scenarios, and once this event was canceled, on talking with the Attorney Brunfeld, we are, our staffing is gonna be the same as it has been the past years. We know people are gonna still come here, we know that. And it's gonna be a combination of my officers, we're even talking about staggering the start times on them, we'll be able to relieve those officers early if there aren't a lot of people. We can still have them stay out, so our staffing, we're gonna be okay, it's gonna be working with each individual business on that main street that's choosing to stay open. You know, we're not gonna be in their places, we will be on the street where we belong in the squads, responding to the calls, and educating people if they are coming out onto the street, please take your drink back in. Hopefully, the bar owners or that are serving the alcohol will do their best to keep them inside the bar. If they wanna come out on the street at 10 o'clock, you're worthy welcome, but you're gonna have to stay on the sidewalks, and, you know, we will do our best to maintain that. So you're looking at between 9:45 and 10:30 would be the time that the people would probably come out on the street. Otherwise, we will be able to, I think, maintain everybody in those establishments where they're at.
Well, it sounds like you have a plan, and you're ready to go with it?
We don't-
You know, and like you says, if, again, if I was on, if I was in business, I would, you know, help people use the higher bouncer, I would have a guy at the front door and say, no drinks, you know?
And I'm still going to, I'll be meeting with each individual business over myself, along with sending a reminder letter. I will be requesting again, no glass, even though there's not gonna be a street dance, I know how they filter out onto the street. So if we can start early on, going to plastic a couple days before, I think we'll get ahead of, you know, potential problem, and we're just, maybe we can even throw something in the paper or mediaize that, just saying, you know, there's no drinks allowed on the streets.
Well, everybody has to pull it in a little bit, it's a sad thing, but it's just what's going on in our society, and it's nothing we can do about it.
I never, ever thought I'd ever see the time there was no Fourth of July in Evlith.
It sounds like a bad joke.
It does sound like a bad joke, and we know who owns that one, but...
And my main concern from a legal perspective is, I just wanna make sure that we don't get put in a position where we lose the protection of insurance coverage.
Yeah.
Because if that, if there was some big claim that came forward, and then suddenly, they also pulled the insurance protection away from us, now the city's general fund is exposed, and we don't wanna get into a situation like that.
Well, I think we asked enough questions and had for the people to realize what, why everything is going on the way it is, and why everything had to be canceled, and, you know, good luck to everybody over the Fourth. You know, it's just, it's gonna be something different.
I think everybody will pay good rids to 2020 and look forward to 2021.
Well, it's been a bad year.
It's not been a good year to start, yeah.
No. I look at the bright side, it's half over.
I don't know. Unbelievable, it's just unbelievable.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Well, then we just have to wait to see what our governor's gonna come up with in another week or so.
But that's all we have under New Business. Ain't anybody have anything else or any committee reports? I think you guys kinda went over what you did with the EDA on that. Chief, do you got anything more to add?
Well, Mayor Councilor, I would just like to add on some of the openings that started yesterday. I've had an opportunity to check out some of the businesses and speak with the owners, and I'm very proud of the steps that they have taken as professionals on a safety measure. Some of them are very, have come up with some great ideas, and there are a lot of people right now, and they are practicing the safe distancing, and I'm very proud of them, so I, I hope things get better, and I hope things open up a lot quicker as we get closer to the Fourth of July.
Jack, do you got anything?
I don't, thank you.
Jerry, you got anything to add?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Alan?
Right over here.
Steph, you got anything? Mitch, you already gave us enough bad news.
I probably, I probably, I probably talked too much today, so my apologies for that.
Yeah, I may have ghosted off, I might have missed my turn.
No, no, we're, we were gonna be the encore, counsel.
I want to thank a couple ladies, Sandra and Guy, the innovation of the, using past mother's dishes to fire, but you're sorely, sorely in need of, 'cause you know what, it's a, it's like a dorm bell, or so, you know what I mean? So she, they do end up doing a very nice fiesta there, and we wanna give a public thank you to those individuals for thinking of us, so, thank you, Guy, and I appreciate very much.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else, John?
That's it.
Joe?
No, I've said enough.
Brian?
No, sir.
I have nothing else, anybody from the audience? Meeting adjourned.